Good evening, I call the order the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three City of Calabasas regularly scheduled council meeting. Tonight, I'm joined by Mayor Protem Weintraub, Council members Albrecht, Bizajin, and Kraut, as well as our city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk, and staff. If you'd like to provide public comment in our in-person, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. If you're joining via Zoom, please press raise hand or star nine if you're joining via phone, and star six to unmute yourself on the phone when the agenda item you'd like to comment on is presented. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for all communications and public comment. When you're called upon to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed up to three minutes to to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this council. Tonight, we are thrilled to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Girl Scout Troop thirty-two fifty-six. Welcome.
Good evening. May I please have your attention for our flag ceremony? Please stand for the presentation of our colors. Clerk guard, attention. Clerk guard, advance. Clerk guard, halt. Clerk guard, present the colors. Please join us in singing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in singing God Bless America. God bless America.
Stand beside her and guide her through the night. From above, from the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean, white with snow. God bless America. Sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home.
Clerk guard, post the colors. Clerk guard, salute the colors. Clerk guard, dismissed.
Thank you very much, girls. Thank you. And if you look on eBay, we'll have lemon cookies. No, no, I'm teasing. Thank you so much. Great way to start the meeting. In order to address questions and comments and further vet an ordinance under item number eight, regarding security by commercial retailers, there's been a request to postpone it to a future meeting. Mr. City Manager, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had several questions come in and upon further review, both from a city's legal counsel and staff. We'd like to continue the request the council continue this item.
Okay, thank you. With with that in mind, may I have a motion to approve the agenda with those modifications?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, passes five zero. We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does the city attorney have anything to report out?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session, considered two items. One, have anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation, but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. And second, to consider the performance evaluation of the city manager. The council provided direction to staff and council and took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to council announcements. Mayor Protem Weintraub.
Thank you. Just wanted to announce that although fireworks tickets are sold out, there are still a lot of other activities that are open to the public taking place on the Fourth of July. So please check out our city website. You can register to take place in a race around the lake. There's a pet show. There's events happening at the tennis and swim center. So all the details are on our website. But I also want to make sure that the community is aware that if you see an issue, a non-emergency issue happening within the city after hours, you can call the main line to City Hall, eight one eight two two four sixteen hundred, and somebody will answer and you can provide the information of the incident that is happening for anything non-emergency. But a lot of times we get emails and people don't know what to do because it's after business hours, but now that service is available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council member Albrecht.
Thank you. A little short on the announcements tonight. I'll be attending the kids' club on Friday to watch the graduation.
I hope I'll make it back to join you. Council member Bizajin.
I don't have any announcements that I haven't made, and I did want to wish everyone a very happy summer.
Thank you. And Council member Kraut.
Thank you. I have no events to announce tonight, but I do want to add to what Council member Weintraub said. We also have our Calabasas Connect app, and that's a great easy tool you can download to your smartphone and have it with you. It's a real easy way to let the city know if you see any sort of an issue in your neighborhood or parks or streets.
Fantastic. And I'll just take a moment to wish everybody a happy, safe Fourth of July weekend and holiday. Enjoy Independence Day any way you can. If you can join us in the daytime, it's really a fun, fun day and then a wonderful evening as well. And we will, this will be our last meeting until August ninth, so we're on break. Even though you can use the app or make calls to the city, we will not be having city council meetings till August ninth. Now we'll move on to oral communication and public comment. And if you wish to speak on any item not on the agenda, please fill out a card and give it to our city clerk. I see we have one card today from our ever-present Mark Levinson from the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce, introducing new member.
That's correct. Thank you very much, Mark Levinson. I'm the immediate past chair of the Chamber of Commerce, and I live in Los Angeles. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Amalika, who has started a new group here in the city. It's called Change the Cycle. It's an organization, a nonprofit, that benefits young women who help them financially with guidance, with structure, in making their lives better throughout. And it's, they don't just bring you in and leave you. They guide you, they keep you, watch you, and watch you mature. So it's a great, great organization for young women. So if you know of young women that are interested, they are here in the city. And it's now my pleasure to introduce Amalika.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Levinson. It's an honor being here. I'm from Calabasas. Got the opportunity to live here for nine years. We love living here, myself and my husband Chamil. Again, thank you for having us. I want to talk about the nonprofit we created here in Calabasas. Again, it's called Change the Cycle. We help young girls here, even as well as internationally, to change our circumstances through education. It's so dear to us because education is what really gave us an opportunity to come to this country and make a difference, get our education, have amazing careers, or as well as get a path to citizenship in this country. Today, I can call my home, Calabasas. Very proud to say that, and I want to give back to the community. So Change the Cycle was created in twenty twenty. We have helped girls locally as well as internationally. We have given scholarships, tuition, paid tuition fees, supplies, but we have a long way to go. What we are trying to do is create a program to get more girls in technology. The program's called Code in Pink. We see a huge gap in girls like not being in the industry. We are working on creating certifications, diplomas for girls to change their circumstances. So Change the Cycle is our nonprofit. The biggest challenge that has, we have faced is getting funding, you know, getting sponsors. We have had a couple of events in Calabasas, and our community has been really, really good and helped us, but we want to expand and help more girls. So if anybody's willing to help us, it's called Change the Cycle. Again, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome. I have two other cards, public comment cards, and if I get the name wrong, I apologize. Tabba Taboo. I got it wrong. Okay, well, you'll, please come and tell me the correct pronunciation. And and welcome.
If anyone pronounced it correctly, so don't, yeah. Tabba Tabai. Tabba Tabai.
Okay, I was close.
It repeats itself.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I have to put this?
No.
No, okay.
Not today.
And before I start, I would like to thank every one of you for everything you do for our city. And we really love this city. We are here since ninety-one. And I think that's the year it became City of Calabasas. And so many of our friends and family, they moved here because of every one of you making this city what it is with all the parks and all the security. And I also want to thank you for everything you are doing to open the gym. Now, in Agura, the Calabasas. When I read about the new development to in Calabasas, again and again, it really brought back all the memories of the fire we had. I think it was two thousand eighteen. And I know for some of us, we could get out fine. But my brother-in-law, he really had lots of problem getting to the highway because of where they were living. So and so many of our friends, they were in the same situation. So I totally understand, and I really feel the need that we need to have more apartments, more living spaces for people in need. I totally sympathize and empathize with that. But I think they're also important to consider the security of the area we want to place this kind of development. And I sincerely believe with all this global climate change and all the fire that we are going to face, unfortunately, and earthquake and all these disaster that we cannot predict ahead of time. I'm very concerned about our escape from our home to somewhere safer. So I strongly hope that every one of you, you consider this security and safety issue and reject the project. Thank you.
Thank you very.
I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to.
Thank you for being here. And next we have Priscilla Lee. Welcome, Priscilla. And both cards had notes on against the Cruzan project, just to make that clear.
Hello, I'm Priscilla Lee, and I do live in Calabasas with my family. And I, again, I just reiterate what Fatima said. So you're all so important to our city. And we on both sides of Las Virginas love having you here, all of you. And that means everybody. So I wanted to say that, you know, we have, as as Fatima mentioned, we have so many things that can happen in our communities, like the fires and the the our possible earthquakes. And I know it's not a big earthquake center, but you know, we have to be careful. So I was just, I just left the Senior Citizens Center because I am a senior citizen, and I don't know how to download some of these apps that I was trying to download in order to apply for a certain job, a federal government job, by the way, at my age. So I've done, had a lot of different kinds of careers, but I have not had this kind of career. And I've been an educator, and I have a few degrees, and I attended eleven colleges, blah, blah, blah. But these young people from Calabasas High School, oh my gosh, they are so fabulous. So I was having trouble downloading all these different apps and, you know, it was like all over the page. And they were saying they wanted to make the application as easy as possible. Easy for whom? Wasn't easy for me. So I've been struggling with applying for this job, and these young people were able to to help me to the point where I actually got most of it done. So they're they're so grateful that they are working there. I'm I'm so grateful that they're there. Every Wednesday, anybody who, you don't have to live live in the Senior Citizens Center to be able to go there. So it's, that's fabulous. And I appreciate the fact that the the city does that for us, us people who are not up on all the apps. So, but if we had that development, the Cruzon development over here in the parking lot, it would not be easy for us to get to that, those services. And not to mention all the other services that the city provides for us, like the library, the Founder's Hall. And I just ask each one of you to make sure that you vote the way that you think it should turn out. And I hope that you agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have no other public speaker cards tonight. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who wishes to speak on a non-agendized item?
No, Mr. Mayor, no more speakers.
Then we'll move on to consent items one through four. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any consent items? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any of the consent items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then may I have a motion to approve items one, consent items one through four?
I'll move consent items one through four.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. All right, we'll move on to item number five. This is a continued public hearing from the June twenty-first twenty twenty-three council meeting regarding Landscape Lighting Act Districts number twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven, and thirty-two, Levy of Assessments, Adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen sixty-one, approving the final engineer's report in connection with Landscape Lighting Act District numbers twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven, and thirty-two, and confirming diagrams and assessments for such districts for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Are there any changes to the staff report? I believe we have Heather Milton and our interim director Phil Landsafame, and if I have the name wrong, you're going to correct me on that one. Well, one out of two isn't bad tonight, right? I closed. And also, in addition, while then the representative Stacy Reynolds and Sabina Haug are available on Zoom, if I'm correct.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a continued hearing from last week. The engineer's report shows an assessment that is the same as last year plus a CPI increase. That is the approved formula for the districts. The council did ask, or it came up and asked if the traffic were updated, would it make a difference? And in fact, we did apply some numbers, the new new numbers from, it's called ITE, International Transportation Engineers Handbook. Those numbers would raise, would potentially raise the rate in two of the land use areas. However, it would increase it beyond the maximum allowed by the currently approved formula. So that's why this year, we're going to ask you to stay with the same formula with the CPI increase. And then during this coming year, we'll go out with a Prop two eighteen ballot and ask if, two things, to change the formula, to update the traffic, and second, to ask if any of the districts would like to increase that maximum assessment. That's our report. We're available for any questions.
Okay, before I turn to my colleagues, I just real quick to explain to the public and to the mayor, which two of the areas were the ones referred to, and can you explain what a Prop two eighteen ballot would be?
Sure. The two areas are in twenty.
Twenty-four and thirty-two.
Twenty-four and, and actually, I think it's just twenty-four. It's when the, when you have different land uses within one of the districts, that is how you weight the assessment, dependent on how much traffic they would generate. When they're all the same, all the land uses are the same, residential, for instance, they all have the same assessment. A Prop two eighteen is when you want to tax, you have to go to the public and say, do you agree to be taxed? And it requires a majority vote to establish that higher tax.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn any council comments or questions. Seeing none? If there are no other, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this particular?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and seeing no cards from the public? I'll go ahead and ask, the public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen sixty-one approving a final engineer's report in connection with the Landscape Lighting Act District numbers twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven, and thirty-two, and confirming diagrams and assessments for such districts for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved in second and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you very much. I will move on to new business. Item number six. The recommendation to award construction contract for the citywide Green Street Project Phase One, specification number twenty-two, twenty-three dash oh four to GMZ Engineering, Inc., and the amount not to exceed four million, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, and to adopt Resolution twenty, number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen fifty-four, directing the transfer of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars from AB nine thirty-nine fund to the project account. And again, Tatiana Holden will join interim director Phil Landsafame for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. Green Street, citywide Green Street Project Phase One. I just would like to start with the Green Street Project approach to give a little background. The Green Street Project incorporates vegetation, soil, and engineer system to manage stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces. The first Green Street Project, and I'm sure you're all familiar with that location, was constructed on Malibu Hills Road in two thousand eighteen. Goals of this project of Malibu Hills, as any other Green Street Project, includes capturing and infiltrating stormwater runoff and mitigating local flooding to prevent mud, mudslides, washouts, mud flows, and benefit as the cleaner and safer road environment. Phase one of Citywide Green Street Project included three locations, Muro Road, Calabasas Road, and Las Virgenis Road. Bid advertisement was conducted on April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. We sold five bid packages to different construction companies and conducted bid opening on June eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We only received one bid. And that bid was submitted by GMZ Engineering. GMZ Engineering has been licensed for over twenty-five years and has experience in general building, engineering, electrical contractor, and they also do some landscaping and irrigation work. And as you remember, GMZ Engineering was also a contractor on several city projects, Old Town Calabasas Improvement Projects, Sidewalk Improvement Projects, and they're currently working on Alterpenga Mall Hall and Highway Improvement Projects. We looked at the bid, bid's amount, we analyzed the bids, unit costs. And since the bid amount exceeded the engineer's cost estimate, we decided to prioritize locations, and we thought that Las Virgenis Road location is the one that will bring the most benefits to to the city compared to Calabasas Road and Muro Road location, which of course are not unimportant, but they can be constructed later, and we are planning to seek for additional funding in the future and include those locations in the future projects. Las Virgenis Road Improvement Project, just to give you information about that and give a thought process why we decided that that would be more beneficial. It located north of Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Mount Calabasas and terminus of Las Virgenis Road. And it includes construction of twenty-five, twenty-one hundred linear feet along six feet wide vegetated soil on the west side of the road to capture and treat surface flow from the street. And the soil will help to reduce velocity, enabling ill filtration of the stormwater, especially the first flush to the soil, helping to treat the stormwater through the soil media, and any overflow will be discharged into nearby detention basin. Also, the project includes a multipurpose trail which will connect Mount Calabasas to the trailhead north of Las Virgenis and will provide safe connection for for bikers, hikers to to the to the trail. We also are planning to construct a permeable pavement parking lot, which will organize. There is currently, the cars are parked on unimproved shoulder of Las Virgenis Road on dirt shoulder. And there is quite chaotic parking. There is no order to it. That area will be improved to provide parking lots will include parallel and double row parking. Total bid amount was six million, four hundred sixty-seven and two hundred dollars, seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Las Virgenis Road that were separated from the total bid was five, or just over five million dollars. And we negotiated with the contractor, we'll look at at some unit prices, we'll look at some other prices that were included in the bid, and we negotiated it to four million, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars. We're requesting total appropriation of five million, fifty thousand, eight hundred six dollars for, including the five percent contingency, which is standard for a project of this size, and about two hundred thousand for special inspection and material testing. The project is currently funded by, we received, we have an agreements for Measure M funds, which is three point five million dollars, and for Prop one, round one funds, which is five hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. But the shortfall of the project is nine hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars, nine hundred forty. And the staff is recommending to use available funds from AB nine thirty-nine and Measure W, Safe Clear Water Funds, to cover the project. The, those funds are, this project eligible for use of these funds since it provides AB nine thirty-nine as the bill that reduces trash taking to landfill, and this project will help to reduce the mud, mud flows and runoffs from from the sealed unimproved area to the road, therefore reducing amount of the swept trash and dirt from the street that needs to be taken to landfill. And Measure W is definitely qualifies for Measure W funds as it is helping the stormwater runoffs management and treatment. Requested actions tonight are for the city council to award construction contract for the Green Street Project Phase One. to GMZ Engineering for the amount of four million, eight hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred six dollars and seventy-five cents. The appropriation of two hundred thousand to cover costs associated with material testing and special inspections for the project. Directing transfer of four hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars from both AB 939 and Measure W Funds to, to the project account. And approve Resolution number twenty-two-three dash eighteen fifty-four for funds transfer from AB 939.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to council comments or questions, starting with Councilmember Kraut.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. And thank you for all your hard work taking this out to bid. I'm a little dismayed at having one responsive bidder. This has been a recurring theme here for quite some time. And I really think that the city needs to take some action to change that. We can't keep approving contracts that are almost thirty percent over budget on the face bid because we only have one bidder. We need to get some competitive pricing out there. So I'd like to ask a couple of things, and if my fellow council members agree with me, we can, you know, take that up at a future time. But I, I really think that the city manager's office needs to make a concerted effort to reach out to the four companies that pulled packets and ask them why they have not submitted bids. Also, reach out to other companies and find out why there's not so much participation in a five million dollar contract. I, I'd like to bid on a five million dollar contract. I can get my construction company up and going by Thursday if you give me a minute. I, I just don't understand it. And, you know, there could be any number of reasons. It could be that there's not enough contractors out there. Maybe we need to reach out to contractors in Louisiana or Michigan, somewhere where it might be slow and entice them to start a satellite office in Calabasas. Then we can get the sales tax money as well. There's got to be a solution to this, and it's going to take a concerted effort. And I say the city manager's office because there is a possibility, real or perceived, that companies don't want to bid because one company has always been winning the work, so why bother bidding against them? There could be a perceived notion out there by somebody that the city is favoriting some contractors, and that's why the others aren't playing. So if, if that perception's out there, we need to kill that perception. And I strongly do not believe whatsoever that that would be true. But when the perception gets out there, it, it does tend to spread like a rumor.
Just I'm going to get on the legal side on that one. I think there's no evidence in the record that the city certainly has done any favoritism or violated the bidding statutes. And if there is that perception in the bidding community, we really need to nip that in the bud because we've always complied with the bidding statutes. And we want to make sure that we both walk the walk as we have done, but make sure the folks know the bids, the bids are out there. So we can also look at what have we done to get the word out to on these bids? We've met the statutory minimums. Let's go above the minimums.
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that. And I appreciate also staff's effort in putting the list of people who pulled bid documents to show that we did do our outreach, that we made it available. But we've got to figure out why we're not getting more bids. And whatever effort that takes, I think we need to start, you know, doing that. Thirty percent over bid, over budget, and the solution is to build less for the same amount of the budget, which means we're going to have to go back and spend more money later. Because we're taking out two streets from the project that we're going to have to go back and redo at some point in time. So I think we should really evaluate whether we're getting our money's worth here and whether another bid might yield a different result or not. I don't know if we have a deadline coming up, if we would lose the funding if we miss a certain deadline. I don't know what other implications it would be. But I'm really dismayed at seeing only one responsive bidder here, and I, I think we need to get to the bottom of that. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Albert.
Thank you. I would agree with Councilman Kraut. Something that I was going to bring up, I didn't look into this because it was a concern. First, the project looks great. I had the good fortune of writing with you and our previous Public Works Director and saw this area for myself months ago. And we're a city that's got a variety of different terrains and different circumstances. The other two areas that are mentioned could use it well, but this is also more popular and probably has more traffic. So I like the way it looks. I think you can't deny it. It's sharp and very appropriate for all reasons. The idea that we only had one bidder when there were five that pulled packets does disturb me a little bit, to say the least. And I know in talking with the city manager concerning this before we had the meeting tonight, I know that staff went out and made phone calls and did as much as they could possibly do. But there seems to be a vicious circle with this sometimes where we're not getting enough bidders. So the perception is something that might be or might not be there, but we've got to find a solution. I'm sure they're a very good company, and they've proven to be. But it would be nice to have alternatives to manage our, our bidding process better. I think everybody would agree with that. So that's how I feel on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buzajin.
Couple of questions, the, the, and I agree with what's been previously stated. All the projects, I mean, they're, they're right on our border. And a couple of these projects, have, have we checked to make sure that we're not doing any work outside the city border? Because I know it's not, like on the Muro Road border, it's not exactly marked. All of it's within the city?
Yes.
The, the project that's on Las Virginas Road near Mount Calabasas, is that? How does that project relate to the roundabout that's being proposed? Is it related at all? Like, like we haven't committed to the roundabout?
We haven't committed to the roundabout. It, roundabout is called Green, Green Street Project Phase Two. However, it's still going through community outreach phase. It's a different location. It's not connected to, to this. It's just, it's like Las Virginas, Calabasas Road, Muro. It's a different location. It's just limited to this. It's close.
How close is it?
It, it's close. It's Mount Calabasas, and the roundabout is at the intersection with Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Because if we proceed forward with this phase, and then the council decides for whatever reason not to do the roundabout, how does that impact the improvements here?
It does not. They're.
Standalone, it won't, it won't matter.
They're designed as a separate standalone.
Would it prevent, would these, with, with what we're doing here, would that prevent us from effectively doing something else with that intersection? Like a light or just keeping it the same?
No.
Okay. I just would reiterate, I do agree with the comments that have been made. I'm very reluctant to approve the, the larger amount, but I guess we can discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I put ten more?
Thank you for the report. I know it's not your fault that the people that took out the bid packages didn't return them. But I was just curious, when phone calls were made, did we gain any understanding of why people didn't bid on the project?
Contractor, they purchased the packet, they analyze where the work, where the location is, how much work it is, and what their availability, how many crews they have, where they're working. For example, GMZ, because they're already here, it's, it's easier for them to just continue working within the city limits. It's easier for them to mobilize. And even they, they said they're busy. They have a lot of projects in there. But because they're, you know, they're close already with their construction, reconstruction, and construction crew, they can do it. Other contractors are, by the volume of this project, they just realize that they will not be able to commit to obligations and timeline.
Okay. And then if we, given the budget, can't go forward with Muro Road and Calabasas Road, when would, when do you think we might go back for those?
We, for example, we have Measure W application coming up in July. We can apply with this project for funding. And if we're successful, hopefully we can, and the project's already designed. So that's always a plus when we apply for a grant. And hopefully we can go to construction next year.
Okay. And then if this project, if the bid is approved tonight, what is the timing of when the project would start and be completed?
The construction duration is approximated to last six months. If, if the project is approved tonight, it will take a few months to get the contract signed and contractors mobilize if, if it starts by September. So it will be completed by, by summertime.
And then my last question is, while the work is being done, what type of impacts would it have to driving on the street and like traffic and all of that?
There will be traffic control. Contractor, of course, will implement traffic control to make sure there is access to all residential and also that not all the parking is taken away at the same time. They will be able to provide some areas for people to still park there while they're working on areas that are fenced for the construction.
Because people, I mean, that's such a heavy area with people driving, you know, going up to Loop and Hill and all around there, so.
That will not affect that intersection.
Okay.
There will, yeah, it will, there will be some effects on parking as we know that there are people, they rely on that available parking. But there will be some arrangements made, so it's not everything is blocked at the same time.
And if and when this project moves forward, we would work with the people directly impacted, like be proactive in our communication with the residents and businesses or whomever would be impacted.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And could you just briefly go over the environmental impacts of purposes, stormwater drains and so forth?
Absolutely. The, this project as, the, the way that Las Virginas Road drains that all the pervious surface water will be, we will be able to treat with the provided bioswale and permeable parking, parking lots. And the first flash will be treated through that and infiltrated to the soil. And all the overflow will go because there is a catch basin there. And the LA County that, we coordinated also with LA County. They know about this project, and the overflow will go into that basin.
Right. And the purpose is also to protect the untreated runoff water from going into the creeks and streams and eventually the ocean, right?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. And then just for clarification, AB 939, that fund is our, just for clarification, that you refer to here?
It's the landfill diversion fund.
Okay.
If you will.
And then the last question for me is, how long does, and I know it's not a perfect science, does it take to get reimbursement from the funds from Measure M and Prop One that we're, we're seeking for reimbursement for this project?
The way that Measure M works, we submit invoices on quarterly basis. And once the invoice submitted takes about thirty days for us to be reimbursed. And with the exception of five percent retention, that's, it's hold by Metro until the project is completed, and we audit it by Metro. And then we get the five percent retention reimbursed. With Prop One, we're assume it's a similar process. We haven't worked with them before. But first of all, it's only five hundred thirty-six thousand. And we, we are assuming it's similar process for us to get reimbursed once we'll submit the invoice to them. It's a review process and reimbursement within thirty or forty-five days.
Okay, thank you. And as Peter said, that's still a lot of money. So we're going to, we're going to watch it all and appreciate this report. And Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public online wishing to speak on this particular item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before I go any further, any other council questions or comments on this item? Okay.
Did we want to discuss further the, the cost issue and the lack of bidders? And this is kind of a now or never. I know several people mentioned it. Peter, did you? I mean, did you have any alternate suggestion?
I think my alternate suggestion would be to take it up for a second bid. And I know that's a long process and, and it costs money. But the bottom line is, is that we had about five million dollars budgeted, and it came in at six and a half. And we were able to take a couple of streets out of the project in order to get it down to the right cost. But that still leaves one point three million dollars worth of work undone. So we're not saving money by keeping it in the budget. We're just deferring that cost till later. And I don't know, it could be that if we go back out to bid, we'll get three bids of the same number. We could get higher bids. I certainly do anticipate that, you know, that those things could happen. I, I honestly don't know how to fix that at this point. I think whether we approve it or deny it tonight, I think that, you know, the city needs to really take a hard look at the process and figure out what's going on out there. And, 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 you know, I, I want to just clarify that I don't know or believe it to be any one thing. It could be that the contractors are all so busy that they're only doing one or two projects a year. It could be any number of things going on out there. But it just doesn't make sense to me, the number of projects that we've seen with, with only one bidder. And I'm not just talking about Public Works. We had the same thing in landscaping. We've had, you know, the same thing in some of our consultant requests. So I just think it's a, it's in the city's best interest to have multiple bidders on any project because that's what keeps the prices fair. That's how we know is that one contractor checking another. So my only solution would be to rebid it. Again, I don't know if that's going to be a, a successful idea or a bad idea. It could go either way. But to me, if we're thirty percent, we're twenty-eight percent higher than the city engineer's original estimate, something's out of line here. And because we don't have a second number to compare it to, we really can't tell whether it was the original estimate or the bids that have come in.
Let me ask staff if I can. When did the original estimate come in? When was that done? Time last, please.
That was done before the project was bid, two, two months prior.
Are we talking about this year?
This year.
Okay. Do you have any explanation or belief that if we went out, for example, to rebid, that the numbers, that we would get other qualified bidders, possibly lower? Or anything of the sort?
Yeah, we definitely analyzed the, the prices. We noticed that, and it was confirmed that unit price for concrete went up significantly. That was one of the, and another one was a traffic control, which also I think for Las Virginas, maybe it was the engineer's error to underestimate it considering the situation on Las Virginas Road for parking. But the major factor was increased cost of concrete.
Any other council comments?
It's discomforting to, to do this without, without knowing more information about what's out there and who might bid.
If, the question was asked, and if I could just re-ask it in a, in a different way, has each of the four bidders that did not return a bid but did pay a hundred dollars for the packet, have you contacted them personally by phone to ask them why in their particular case each one did not submit a bid?
We were able to contact two of them. And that was the explanation that they, once they analyzed the scope of work, that they were not able to commit to providing construction for the project within duration, requested duration and for the school.
Okay. And the other two?
We were not able to hear back from them.
Certainly, construction has changed post-COVID, during and post-COVID. So I know costs are up everywhere. Other council comments or questions? I, I don't, I'll just say, I understand the concern. I, I agree that we need to, to do everything we can to keep costs lower. I think we're about to see that on our next item as well, that things have, have gone up and sometimes we don't get what we used to get for the same amount of dollars in, in general, and bids and contracts throughout the city. So I am, I am fine with moving forward on this. I'm all. I am, I am fine with moving forward on this. I'm also fine with listening to majority of my colleagues. We seem to be a little split right now. Councilmember Albeck.
So, excuse me, we're between two places. I mean, I think you know we need this done. And the project looks good. There's not a question about that. But um, it's this vicious circle that I mentioned that we have to draw the line somewhere. Uh, if we had an idea of how the other bidders who purchased packets who were interested uh, turned it down. And we felt comfortable that it wasn't for any other reason because they uh, felt they couldn't underbid. Maybe we'd have a better feeling about making a decision. I mean, my feeling is to continue this until August where we could uh, have a better idea from you, how uh, the other bidders uh, reacted to it. We certainly don't want to put it off till August and go out for other bidders again and then have the same thing happen all over again. So waiting till August, the prices are going to go up too. So I think all of us feel we'd like to have it. But I would like to feel more informed about making the decision than just make a rash, take a rash vote.
Ed, uh, Councilmember Albeck, Ed, just real quick, are you referring to the two bidders we have not heard from or the two?
We have not heard from.
Okay, do you have a comment on that?
So we can collectively see the body of work of why they're all saying what they are. Is there a common denominator? Why they're not? Is it because they're all busy? Then they'll probably be busy uh, when we go out to rebid again. So I don't want to waste time if it, your opinion. Um, it's a worthless endeavor to wait. But I also want to hear how they uh, how they felt about the project.
Yeah, I'm on my job.
I think that's what Tatiana was saying, that they spoke to the two, two of the bidders who said they were too busy or you know, they weren't interested. And then the other two they reached out to weren't even interested in responding to you. So I think that says something as well. So I feel, I'm not happy with the cost, but I feel we did our due diligence on this one. I don't know what we would get with rebidding the project and that's going to take time and money. Um, I, it's kind of like if we want to do it right now, this is the price we're getting. I mean, I don't know, it doesn't seem like anyone else is going to show interest. Project's already been put out to bid. Two contractors said they weren't interested for X, Y, and Z. So I don't know. It's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, some project was advertised and was put on all the plan rooms and uh, we know that many contractors subscribe to those plan rooms and were able to um, to get the, to receive the plans and look at the plans and the specs for the project.
Is it your belief then that the, this project is just not one that all these contractors were interested in for whatever reason? Uh, if they took a look at it, obviously, and they needed work, we would have got a bid from them, I assume.
Correct. It's just a combination of, you know, where there are other projects allocated, where there are crews or and the scope of work and the amount of work, how they are able to allocate their crews.
Okay. All right, I'm hearing some different comments here. Uh, I can ask if anyone would like to make a motion to award the contract as indicated here. First, I'll ask again, even though I know no one has hands up to speak, right, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there a motion I can have either to award this construction contract as indicated or an alternative motion at this point?
Um, I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
All right, and I I will second it, uh, hearing no other seconds. So it's been moving second in. Uh, in, take a vote on it? No, well, no substitute motion? Okay, all in favor of uh, motion to award construction contract for the Citywide Green Street Project Phase One uh, specification numbers twenty-two, twenty-three oh four to GMZ Engineering, Inc. And the amount not to exceed four point four million, six hundred, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eight fifteen, eighteen fifty-four, directing the transfer of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine seventy from the AB nine thirty-nine fund to the project account. All in favor indicate by saying aye, aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And any abstentions? I didn't hear your vote, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, so it passes three to two if I'm correct on that vote. Thank you very much, and all good points made. Thank you very much. I'll move on to unless someone, anyone needs a break?
No, can I just say something? Maybe next time in the staff report, you could list, you know, we contacted, we reached out to these people who didn't respond. Maybe we can add that as a section to all of these um, staff reports relating to bids.
Yeah, although I, I think you should keep the confidence of which companies responded and which didn't, maybe.
No, just like one, two, three, four, five, no names or any, I mean, no names, but just so we have that information. I think it'd be helpful.
Thank you very much. All right, should we move on? Anyone need a break? We are good. We'll move on to item number seven, review and direction from the council on law enforcement service levels provided by the LA County Sheriff's Department. Uh, our city manager came to me to make the presentation.
Uh, Mayor, honorable council members. Tonight, we have the opportunity to review our LA County Sheriff's contract. And th- this is something that um, the council has asked us to look into um, uh, for several months. It's been on our future agenda item and was, has been part of our strategic priorities uh, since this last uh, summer. We do have uh, joining us via Zoom Lieutenant Foss with the Lost Hill Station and also Sergeant Chow, who is with um, LA County Sheriff Contract Law. They'll, they will be available to answer any questions that might come up that may be uh, unclear or not presented well in this, this slides. I I do want to go through um, the slides and and do so, there's quite a few slides, but I'll go through hopefully quickly. Um, if there's any time that you'd like me to stop to address or focus on a certain aspect of the presentation, I'm happy to do so. Uh, a- as the council is aware, the, the city contracts with LA County Sheriff for law enforcement services. In essence, LA County Sheriff's become, is our police department. We're fortunate to have the Lost Hill Station in our, in our jurisdiction and that um, uh, that station is currently overseen by Captain C two. The agreement was um, adopted or approved their current agreement uh, in two thousand nineteen and will expire next year. And we have the option then to renew that agreement uh, every five years. Through the, through the agreement process, each year councils, councils and cities have the opportunity to establish the service levels for the policing or law enforcement in their communities. Uh, one thing I want to point out and will emphasize this throughout the discussion is when the city contracts for um, services, in reality, we're contracting for hours and minutes. We're not contracting specifically for a body. Now, there are some um, instances where that's a little bit different and I'll note those as well. But again, um, when we go through this contract, you'll see that we are contracting for us, what are referred to as deputy service units, which translate into hours and minutes for a given year. Uh, these deputy service units uh, include overhead costs into the, and to these numbers. So that would be the station leadership, dispatch, um, detective work, whatever that might be, administrative support are embedded in those numbers. And uh, as you, as we'll see also, the, the city can contract for special assignments or, or um, uh, deputies above and beyond the, the normal activity of patrol. The rates for the sheriff, uh, deputies are set by LA County Sheriff's Department and a master rate schedule that's published each year. And those rates are based on um, increases each year as well as a liability surcharge that is associated with um, the contract. Uh, Councilman Buzadgin sits on our, our liability. What's the correct name of that? Councilman?
Trust Fund.
Trust Fund, thank you. And um, uh, they look at the, 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 the lawsuits, the settlement, the claims that come into that and um, uh, help manage that, uh, that insurance that covers some of those, those outside claims to, um, in in conversations with Councilman Buzadgin over these last couple of years. Um, he's been astonished to see this number grow and and he's um, predicted, uh, rightfully so that uh, with those discussions with other members of that group, that we're going to see that increasing over time. To put it in perspective, in two thousand ten, there was a surcharge of four percent that was levied on on the, the contractual, contractual services. This year, it was implemented going forward for twenty-three, twenty-four, a twelve percent liability surcharge.
And next year, I hate to interrupt, next year, you can expect one or two percent probably in addition.
So the, these are big numbers that we're seeing in the, in these increases on the liability surcharge. Thank you, Councilman. Just on the base rates, uh, I I wanted to provide this graph. This was provided by Contract Law that shows just um, the increases over the last ten years. Um, for the most part, uh, uh, increases have ranged between two and a half, three point seven percent uh, with a couple of years of uh, in the fives. We did see during COVID that uh, the sheriff contract did not increase substantially. In fact, uh, for two years, we had less than two percent increases. Again, these are on the base rates uh, for that. However, in this upcoming fiscal year, we're looking at a seven point six one percent increase um, in just the base rates plus a one percent surcharge on, on the liability. So what does this mean to the city and and how to, how to, if we could look at that in perspective? Uh, this graph shows ten years of cost for law enforcement. Um, if you look at fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, uh, a little over ten years ago, we were paying four point one, almost four point two million dollars for law enforcement services. This upcoming year, we're projected to pay five point six uh, million. So that's an increase of uh, just under one and a half million over that uh, ten-year cycle. And um, and a very significant increase uh, um, over those ten years. And as Councilmember Buzadgin said, very likely increases just with the surcharge coming up next year as well. Before I go on to discussing the um, the, what is often referred to as the five, seven, five, is there any uh, questions um, on the present presentation up to this point?
I'm going to reserve my questions till the end or comments. Any other council comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, council. So each year, as I mentioned, uh, the city has the opportunity to request changes in service levels through the five, seven, five document. This is a service level authorization form. Uh, again, this is really small as it was a screenshot on the, on the, for the presentation, but that is in your packet for you to look at. And then the second page, I apologize, even smaller, but again, in your packet. Um, I I just wanted to be able to show both full pages and then I'll break out different sections as we go through. So where I'd like to start is if you're looking at the five, seven, five, or if you want to look at the slides, um, we'll look first at the deputy sheriffs. So we contract for fifty-six hour units, which means eight hours a day, seven days a week, uh, to cover each of the shifts. And um, this is considered by contract law as what is called a relief position. What a relief position is, is in the event that there is um, um, a deputy that is sick or on vacation or in court or whatever that might be, that uh, those hours or those minutes are backfilled, uh, to make sure that we have that staffing that we're contracting for. Uh, going on into the next, uh, I mentioned the fifty-six hour unit. Um, the contract shows what is the new going forward and what was the previous. So again, we're contracting for nine deputy service units. Again, we're not contracting for nine bodies. We're contracting for those nine deputy service units. Each one of the deputy service units cost at a base rate, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand a year. Um, so again, one deputy service unit is uh, just under five hundred thousand dollars a year. When you combine those nine deputy service units, we come to a number of four point four nine three million. Um, that is before the surcharge. If we add the twelve percent surcharge, then that takes that number up for those nine deputy service units to uh, five hundred, I'm sorry. The liability charge just is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand by itself. So when you combine the estimated or the total of just the base rates plus the liability surcharge, we come to a cost of five million, thirty-two thousand um, for just those nine deputy service units. Then I'll go across here. Um, you have the annual hours, next column would be um, the hour scheduled, the minutes. And then roughly about fourteen point seven individuals or personnel to cover those uh, deputy service units. Going down further into the uh, the five, seven, five form, we have our grant special assignment deputy. This is indicated as a non-relief position again, so uh, when this position is not here because of vacation, sick leave, court, or other instances like that, uh, there is, that position is not backfilled. Um, this grant um, uh, special assignment deputy is our own uh, uh, Deputy Di Matteo, who we're so grateful to have, who works incredibly well with the staff and the community. And um, uh, unfortunately, we only have Deputy Di Matteo for point five, six percent of his time. So in the case of the deputy service units, we're paying for hours and minutes. In this case, this reflects more accurately to both the, the hours and the body in one position. Um, our cost for the grant special assignment deputy, excuse me, let me go back there on that.
Why are the pages different on this?
So um, what I provided to you is a simplified, um, um, as I mentioned in the email last, when I sent this out, this is a simplified um, printout of what you have to cut down on the pages. Uh, otherwise, it would have been twelve other pages just added in. I created extra pages for the public to be able to see that as we were going forward. Would you like me to pause for just a little bit just to get?
Well, do you know what page we're actually on in our chart? Is that ten? Should that be ten on our chart?
So it, you should be at the grant, uh, special assignment deputy.
Okay. Okay, now I understand.
So the grand special assignment deputy cost us um, right now at a point five or six, point five, six percent of that deputy is one hundred and forty, not, one hundred and forty-one thousand, almost one hundred and forty-two thousand. Um, I'm going to jump forward now to the next set of rows below. This would take us to three other personnels that are, that are paid for by the city. Right now, we pay for a motor deputy. We pay for a full deputy, which is uh, again, in this case is the, the personnel, the body and the hours at a cost of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, uh, one hundred and twenty-four per year. We pay for a law enforcement technician. This is a shared cost between the five cities uh, in the cog and the service by the, the Lost Hill Station. The lost, uh, I'm sorry, the law enforcement technician is a fingerprint tech. And so this is something the, the five cities have paid for to collectively together to have that service for fingerprinting. Uh, that is a cost of the city of about uh, thirty-nine thousand per year. And then finally, the, the city pays for a community services assistant with a vehicle. This community of services, services assistant is um, uh, charged with uh, vehicle um, citations. And and we share that cost uh, with Agora Hills uh, at half of the cost of that service assistant, and that's at forty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight per year. If you were to look at the second page of the uh, five, seven, five in your packet, this is an expanded version of the, those top um, rows and columns. This shows us how more or less the, the deputy service units are um, uh, um, scheduled each um, each week or throughout the, the year. So we have the early morning hours, AM and then PM. Again, this is up to Deputy C two and her staff. And uh, again, that comes out to there, the, the two, two point four and three. Again, these are not bodies. These are deputy service units to get those minutes. Jumping over, I want to spend a little bit of attention on this. So this number represents one point six. It falls under, if you look above, under the column, it says SAD, a special assignment deputy. This is um, there's one thing that we need to correct on this. So first of all, the one, uh, we pay for a J-team deputy, a juvenile team deputy. The juvenile team deputy is um, in our schools and services um, Calabasas High School, the two middle schools and other schools in the community. The point six is not a special assignment deputy. This is really actually a um, a clerical error if we need to, that is, is just carried over in the contract over the years that we need to fix. That point six is not a, a J-team deputy, it's regular, or patrol deputy. That 0.6 is not a J-Team deputy, it's regular patrol deputy. And so Captain C2 schedules that 0.6 with the other patrol deputies. So if we were to move that 0.6 over to the other columns, we'd really have eight deputy service units that are on patrol and then one J-Team deputy. That is, accounts for that nine. And then again, our motor deputy is one. And then going down finally, our grant special deputy or our community liaison deputy is at 0.56. So now that we've gone through the 575, this table just provides again, an overall summary. So we have the deputy sheriffs or the DSUs of nine units. Again, that includes one J-Team deputy. Total annual cost of that is about 5 million. And then I won't go through each of those, but if you look at those five different categories of what's being contracted for, the total comes up to 5.6 million, 21,000. So with the, with that summary, this gives us an opportunity to look at where we might want to make changes either in reducing or increasing the deputy or the personnel that we pay for. And so I'm going to switch screens to an actual spreadsheet where we could act, put in some numbers and see what that might look like. Again, we're at 5.61 million. And let me switch screens here. Are you able to see that on the screen? See, I can get it just to start to lose it there. So I'll take it back down. So again, at the direction of the council, we can change some of these numbers. One caveat with that is also based on the availability. So we might request some changes. There might be some transition time to do that. But by just looking at where the council might want to make some changes, we can actually plug in some numbers here and then get an idea of what that might cost us overall for this next fiscal year. So Mayor, with that, maybe before we go into adjusting some of the numbers, if the council is inclined, we can have some questions and comments.
Great. Thank you for that report and the open-ended proposed changes on 575. And we're not just limited to 575 in our discussion. We can talk about anything at this point.
That's correct.
All right. Just wanted to make that clear. So I'll look into council questions or comments. I'll look to Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
Thank you for the presentation. I guess I want to first start by saying I don't want to see any cuts made to our contract. I'd like to see increases where possible with the changes in the landscape with public safety and everything we want to do to keep our community safe. I want to make sure we're investing all the necessary resources into this contract. I think we are very well-served by the Lost Hill Sheriff's Station. And I just want to enhance our services to whatever is available. I know we talked about the grant special assignment deputy. I would recommend that we make that one like a whole. That would be one of my proposed changes. Let's see, can you actually walk, let's see, can we walk through under the proposed 575 changes?
Yeah. Do you want me to put some numbers in? Is that what you're saying?
And just discuss who, like, we talked about it. We talked about it in the larger presentation, but what were we asking for when we talked about with the deputy sheriff? What was our proposed, like, what were we trying to do?
So with, with the deputy sheriff, we, we don't have any changes at that point right now. There was no recommendations in that. But would the council like some maybe initial recommendations from staff? Or do you want to go through questions and comments first?
I would, I would like to, I think, questions and comments first, but I will defer to my colleagues. I'm seeing, yeah, I'd like to give us a chance to at least ask questions and comments. It was a thorough report and then go through and you will provide us hopefully with recommendations and we can go from there. Do you want to?
Yeah, we can go back. I mean, I just, I, anywhere that we can make our contracts stronger to best serve the community, that's where I'd like to focus on. So I know you've reached out to the captain on some of these items, so I think that's worth sharing. But again, I only want to see enhancements to this contract.
Thank you. Councilmember Buzagian.
I think the three areas where we have focused in the past as being the most pressing issues now, in no particular order, residential burglaries, traffic violations, meaning there's just too many violators on the streets and everything from speeding to blowing through stop signs, reckless driving, speed contests, things of that sort. And thirdly, again, not necessarily in this order, would be commercial crimes, commercial burglaries, smash and grab, for lack of a better word, kinds of incidents. Those are the three areas. So really, I would be amenable to, to increasing the contract with a focus on those areas, which would mean, you know, maybe not a law enforcement tech, maybe not a community services assistant. You know, things that, I, I think that we need those three areas looked at first. So what would be, do we have approximate costs? And would it be possible to get a little bit of all three rather than just commit to one extra, you know, body, one extra shift in one area? I mean, how would that work?
That's correct. And so I do have some numbers and we'll plug those in to see what those would look like if we were to make some changes.
So that, that's my input for now. I mean, that's where my focus would be.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crowe.
Think I had a, a few questions and a few comments. First of all, there was talk before, earlier this year, that sheriff's contracts could not be increased because of hiring limitations. Is that true or?
Yeah, and I'll have Lieutenant Foss join in if, if, if there's any thing that I missed. So Councilman, you are correct. For, for a while, there was a freeze on being able to add new deputies. In part, that was because of the, there weren't new deputies coming out of the academies. From what we're understanding from Sheriff Luna, that has been changed. Now, there may be a time as those deputies go through the academy and graduate to get those actually in our station, but that freeze has been lifted to be able to amend contracts.
Okay, great. The question regarding the special assignment deputy, you mentioned the 1.6, that only one of that was the J-Team and the other 0.6 was a regular patrol deputy?
That's correct.
I would ask that you get that in writing from the sheriff's department. Because one of the things I'm very cautious of is I don't want to make any changes personally, and I don't know how the rest of the council will vote tonight. But I'd like to make sure that we keep the same level of service at our schools with the J-Team. And so I don't want any reduction there. And certainly if we keep it the same or, or move that 0.6 around, I want to make sure that the school district understands that we are keeping that level of service there. So a memo from the sheriff's department clarifying that would really help support this because I know there's been some miscommunication between us and the school district in the past. And I think we really need to start making that a priority. On a similar note, you know, I, I know one of the things that we all love is our Deputy De Matteo. And we would love to have him here full-time. However, we know that we share him with the city of Agora Hills and I'm sorry, Hidden Hills. And I'm sure they would be very upset if we stole him away. So I don't want to make any changes to that portion of our contract again, without communicating with our neighbors first. So just a couple of qualifications in the way we communicate with, with others. And then I guess my last question would be, if we were to move, let's say, a motor deputy to, to a patrol deputy, the motor deputy does traffic enforcement?
That's correct.
Do the patrol deputies do any traffic enforcement? Can they do part of that or?
Let me have Lieutenant Foss answer that one. Great, yes.
Yes, so the traffic units in the patrol vehicles do do traffic enforcement. The mobility of the motor units, based on my experience, typically provides a little more effectiveness in terms of how they can position and maneuver through traffic. Oftentimes, the traffic units are responding to traffic collisions as well, which takes away from their ability to enforce as efficiently as a motor unit does to generate those traffic citations and, and traffic safety awareness. So I would, my, my opinion would be to maintain the motor deputy position because they also work the safe canons, overtime spots and special assignments that affect mall and highway, which generates quite a bit of concern from the residents of Calabasas.
Thank you for that. And Mulholland Highway was exactly why I was asking the question is if we did make a change to the motor deputy, I just wanted to make sure that we would still have the, the, the tools to do some traffic enforcement when necessary and locations where it's necessary. I'm not saying that I would, you know, make that decision right off the bat, but it's something I know that we're potentially considering here. The last question related to that would be, there's obviously not a one-for-one in a motor deputy and a deputy sheriff. Because I assume one is 40 hours and the other is 56 hours and one comes with a motorcycle and one doesn't. Lots of different variations there. Best I can see, it's about 0.65 is what, 0.65 of a deputy sheriff on a 56-hour unit is what the same cost would be for a motor deputy. But all of our deputy sheriffs are in whole numbers. Do we have the ability to do fractional 56-hour units?
We do. In fact, so our motor deputy was a 0.5 deputy up until just about a year and a half, two years ago, when we moved it to a full deputy. And, and so in conversations with Captain C2, if we were to reduce the motor deputy at 0.5, in essence, we'd be sharing that, that cost with the county. They would still keep that motor deputy here. It would be a shared cost with the, with the county.
Okay. And then last not question, but something to point out. At our last meeting, when Deputy De Matteo gave us the crime report, one of the questions I asked him was what time of day were those crimes occurring? And it was, I recall, the dinnertime hour was, was by far the, the worst case. And the reason I asked that question was in preparation for this evening. The second page, of course, asks, when do we want those deputies patrolling either the early morning, the morning, or the PM evening hours? And I think we need to consider all of that as we do this reassignment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. All great questions tonight. So happy to have our relationship with the Lost Hill Sheriff's Department, Deputy De Matteo. I mean, we're so lucky. And it's come over time. We've got to know each other. I'm very happy about it. Certainly don't want to make any changes other than possibly, as discussed a little bit, redeploying where we can. We have some vehicle signage that we've approved that's going to come out to help speed control a little bit. That those motors, those signs have data on them. There's going to be data that we'll be able to download and find out what hours of the day the, are the worst times. And maybe we could discuss with Captain C2 how we could redeploy as that data comes to our acknowledgement. It would be senseless not to look at that. I mean, Mulholland is certainly a big one. And there's two ways of going on Mulholland. You go all the way down close to Mulholland Drive and then onto Topanga, or you go all Topanga. So either way, it's surrounding the city of Calabasas. So that would be my one recommendation. It's really more of ad hoc hours. And when we discover what they are, try to do a redeployment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as Councilmember Albrecht said, great comments and questions. My couple of comments, the first one is, and it already had been brought up, brought up many times, that I would like to clone Deputy De Matteo three times. And I have no problem bringing a motion. Would probably not sit well with others, but to keep him here and not, not allow you to go to another city. But I don't think I have that authority or power. So we appreciate, you appreciate everyone at Lost Hills Station who helps keep our community safe and, and does a fantastic job. We really value the relationship. Question, and I, for Kendon, I presume you, this is for you. We talked about it briefly. The J-Team, the one officer dedicated the J-Team, is that a dedication for Calabasas schools only?
Mayor, I don't have complete information on that. And that's one of the things that I think we need to monitor better with this contract going forward is how much, how many hours that J-Team deputy is spending in our schools. So I don't have an accurate answer. I apologize for that.
Okay. And I'll follow up comment on, on that would be, again, keeping our kids, keeping all kids safe, absolute priority. But if it is shared with other cities, school district, I think that's something we should look at as a pro rata expense with those also receiving the benefit in other cities. So I think as a council, we should at least look into it.
And, and I think Lieutenant Foss could confirm this, but in conversations with Captain C2, I believe there's two J-Team deputies for the station that are assigned at the different schools.
Yes, we were actually at three. And in terms of tracking the, the amount of time they spend per school, oftentimes they're working in, in cooperation with each other because oftentimes they're doing threat assessments as well as safety walkthroughs and, and training with the different various schools. And it oftentimes requires more than one deputy. However, I will ensure that the supervising sergeant begins monitoring the amount of time spent amongst the various schools.
Thank you, Lieutenant Foss. So they do, the J-Team covers the schools throughout the district, correct? If I'm correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do other cities contract with you for J-Team members? Or is it just Calabasas?
Yes, sir. And there are quite a few schools that we service. I don't have the exact number. I can get that for you.
Right. No, I didn't mean the school. I, I meant other cities. Are we the only one, city that contracts for J-Team members?
I believe it's, it's all the cities are contracted.
Okay, thank you. That's something we can confirm and find out. I appreciate that. And as far as the other questions or comments, again, I'm happy with consideration of seeing proposed changes. I don't want to, I want to see us, as mentioned, protect our citizens, our residents, our open space access and work with the homeowners that I know are in the process of doing as well, homeowners associations to keep our citizens as safe as possible. That's our number one priority as a city, as a council. And I see Lieutenant Cruz. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, perfectly.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Cruz over at Contract Law. I'm the acting captain. I just wanted to brief that there is still a growth moratorium. I know there was some talk about adding, maybe perhaps to the contract. However, as of now, there is a growth moratorium. It's unfortunate, but right now that with, you know, Sheriff Luna has the support of the Board of Supervisors and CEO's office to push for more academy classes. And we're hopeful with a, a now robust campaign to recruit that we can fill those academy classes. But until then, until those academy classes are completed, there is a growth moratorium in place. And we're hopeful that can be rescinded. We're hopeful within maybe six to 12 months. Again, we're, we're, as you guys know, we're short-staffed on the department. And it's not just our department. It's law enforcement across the nation. So.
Thank you, Lieutenant Cruz. And that's my understanding as well. And, and while I, I think there's certainly a majority, probably a consensus, unanimous consensus that we would add more deputies, request more, increase our contract overall. I know what we're looking at possibly is repurposing some of our, our authorized contract proposed changes, especially under the 575 staffing in order to best meet our cities and residents' needs. So thank you for that. I will go ahead and
I did have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Buzagian.
Lieutenant,
Um, Lieutenant uh Cruz, I I heard what you said and I'm aware of that, but I thought that cities can make requests now so that they can have that like on file or or prioritized so that when the the moratorium or whether the freeze is lifted, that we don't just start asking for it just then. Is that correct?
That's somewhat correct. Again, um, as in that with our Chief Financial Officer, Assistant Sheriff Jill Torres. Um, she has with the concurrence of the sheriff, um, by adding that it would just be uh fulfilled through overtime. And as of now, there's there's we're putting the overtime on the backs of of deputies that are already um in the field, you know, uh over tasked taxed with uh with working overtime to fulfill. But um, as of now, there is no additions.
Well, I guess what I was asking, I wasn't so much asking for the overtime now, but can we, can we send a letter to the effect that um, basically we're interested in increasing our contract and we want to know as soon as that's feasible because we want, you know, we want to do it as soon as the window is open to do it.
Yes, definitely. There there could be a letter sent uh uh from the city, uh, and then we will keep that on file. And once uh there's a determination to uh, you know, assess the department's health and and staffing, uh, we will entertain that request.
Okay, that that would be my preference and
Councilmember Crowe.
Yeah, if you could just clarify us, uh, clarify for us, Lieutenant Cruz. When we, when you say we can't increase, is it, we can't increase the units? We can't increase the hours or we can't increase the dollars? What's the parameter that we're working with here?
So the increase would be, uh, for instance, if uh, if you're looking at this slide, the deputy sheriff, you you guys, uh, the city currently contracts for nine service units. Uh, we wouldn't be able to say uh lift that to eleven units. Uh, because that would uh basically increase the number of personnel uh to the station. However, I know there was talk that um in making the um grant special assignment deputy hole. Uh, that would be possible because the deputy, the actual body is there at the station. And if you were to make that whole to one, that would just be uh purchasing more time, more shifts, if that makes sense.
And if we were to, not saying we would, but if we were to drop the motor deputy, would we be able to add a full deputy sheriff? Even though that would be more dollars, it would be the same units?
Could you repeat, if you, if you converted the motor deputy to a
Deputy Sher- Sheriff, which is a fifty-six hour unit?
Uh, I would have to do the math on the personnel because there is a relief factor um for a fifty-six hour unit, it takes roughly, uh, I believe it's one point six three two uh personnel, uh, as opposed to a motor deputy, which takes one personnel. So that six, uh, point six three two, we would have to find that other portion of the of the deputy service unit.
Okay, so tonight we should be uh making our best guess at keeping the approximate hours the same. And certainly it sounds like there's a little bit of leeway if we're, you know, leaning one way or the other.
Yeah, that'd be correct. Um, again, uh as mentioned, that making that uh the special assignment deputy hole wo- would not be a problem. Again, but once we do start adding over and above, um, then it 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 becomes um you know, a uh a personnel staffing issue.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pretend Mine Truck.
I'd like to find out um how the other J team officers funded. And just, I want to reiterate, like, we want to do everything we can to keep the youth in our community safe. And if we're paying for one whole J team deputy, want to make sure that that's servicing Calabasas. So I'm curious how the other deputy is being paid.
Any other council questions, comments, uh? Before we move on to, is there any members of the public with their hands up online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Why don't I turn back to City Manager with proposed or suggested staff recommendations or changes? If you have some.
Thank you, Mayor. And um Lieutenant Cruz, thank you for that clarification on the growth moratorium. I apologize, counsel, for not having that information correct. I misunderstood that in in just recent presentations from Sheriff Sheriff Luna, so I apologize on that. Uh, one question I I'd like to pose to Lieutenant Cruz or Sergeant Cho on this. I I know that these five seven fives are based on fiscal years. And we start the new fiscal year just next week. Um, so with that, uh, Lieutenant or Sergeant, could we continue with our existing um five seven five and then make amendments or changes to that in in August or September uh to address some of the council's concerns of of notifying um partnering agencies, uh, surrounding cities, or also um getting some more research on on J team deputies? Could we continue as is and then make changes in August or September?
Yes, that's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I think uh that helps us tonight uh where we can start looking at some numbers and then come back in in August and September, once we've done our due diligence with some of these questions and requests that have come up. Um one thing I do want to point out to the council is we finished our discussion last week on our budget with a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the black. And so I will show some changes here, but um uh a- as much as we'd like to add five full-time deputies or whatever it might be. Um, we're constrained also by our own budget. So let me just put in some numbers and um first of all, I I would recommend that we that we um remove the Community Services Assistant uh in part because we do have private security that is handling uh vehicle citations and and parking enforcement with that. And so I thi- we see a duplication of efforts there. If we were add the we were add to add the grant special assignment deputy at the the remaining amount that would come out to about a hundred and eleven thousand. If we were to increase.
Wait, is that only point four four?
Because we already have the point fifty-six up here. Yeah. If we were just to increase patrol deputy, if if the council wanted to do that, just by a half of a deputy service unit. And then if we wanted to reduce the motor deputy by half. Um, so if just with those changes right there, we would change our contract amount by about a hundred and sixty-five thousand with a new total of about five million or five point seven million.
I I don't see how you got that, though. What do you mean, you're changing it?
So let me just highlight, so
You're increasing it.
Yeah, so this would increase.
Okay.
Um, we'd be adding uh point five of a uh service unit for a patrol deputy at a cost of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Increasing the special assignment deputy or the community liaison deputy by point four four, which is a hundred and eleven thousand. We would reduce the motor deputy by half or could at a savings of a hundred and eighty-one thousand. And then remove the community service assistant for a savings of forty-four thousand, but still net cost, net increase is a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
Uh, I personally like those changes and would support that. Uh, council comments or questions on this?
That's fine.
I'd support that.
Councilmember Crowe.
Yeah, I would support that. As I mentioned, I would like to make sure that uh Hidden Hills was notified of what we were doing and going back to the J team confirmation as well.
Support as well.
Okay, so it sounds like we have five, your your math skills and and accounting skills work extremely well. Uh, does that mean we can adopt officially or uh Deputy De Matteo full-time or we just have to take a a portion still? I'm looking over there, your voice.
So I've already had some conversations with Captain C two on this and then also Lieutenant Foss on that. But um uh, what I would do right now, council, if you're okay with this, is we have direction. Uh, we'll bring it back for a final vote after we've um clarified those other things and bring that back in August or September, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you. I'd ask since we have them online, if there are any thoughts or issues with what we are looking at and proposing from uh the three of you online, please? Lieutenant Foss, Lieutenant Cruz.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't catch the uh regarding the motor deputy, um, dropping down a point five. What uh, what does that kind of look like on paper? Just uh twenty hours a week coverage?
Yeah, I think Lieutenant, this is something that um we can explore with the staff and your team, just a little bit more to see what that would look like. And uh, again, hearing from the council that priorities are those school zones and some of the uh, the Mulholland corridor and other areas, whether that uh twenty hours a week would still cover some of those high priority areas.
Thank you very much. I think you have direction.
Um, I did have one further question. Did the Public Safety Commission look at this at all?
They have not, but they do have a con- uh, meeting in July, so we could take this same presentation to the commission in July.
I'd like to get in the habit of doing that. Does, I mean, if the council is okay with that, I'd like to, I'd like them to look at it too.
And it looks like there's consensus from the council on taking it to the the commission. Yes.
I think if you can share with the Public Safety Commission what we were thinking as well. Include that in the presentation so they see where we're at.
Thank you. And I'll ask one more time if there's any members of the public who have now decided to ask.
No, Mr. Mayor, no comments.
Thank you. So direction is provided to staff. Thank you very much for the report. Thank you for all three of you being online with this, and we appreciate everything you do. Keep safe. All right, we'll move on to, if everybody's okay, continued business. All right, we'll take a quick break. Uh, and we'll come back at five to nine. We're at eight fifty-five on the dot and we are back uh with continued business. Number nine, strategic priorities, the twenty twenty-two twenty-three work plan update with Michael McCombe to make the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, we're excited to be able to provide the update on the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three strategic priorities. A little bit of background, um, in early two thousand twenty-two, city commenced its first strategic planning process. Um, this was guided by input received both from um inside the organization but also outside. So inside we about now. In inside the organization, um, we met with um one-on-one with council members, we met with um uh staff. And outside the organization, of course, you'll remember we had a um online public um input campaign. Um, we directly sent emails to commissioners and then, of course, we had some workshops. Um, the goal of this entire strategic planning process was to um have an expedited pilot one-year plan where we can take the successes and um some of the challenges and use that as a foundation for future strategic planning processes. So getting into our starting point, um, you'll remember that uh we first started at a very high level in the vision of the city. We took this straight from the twenty thirty general plan, which was, which I'll read here. Maintaining the community qualities that make Calabasas a desirable place to live while facilitating limited changes that will further enhance the quality of life that Calabasas residents enjoy. Um, so again, this is a very high level um aspirational type of goal or vision that the city has. And the question becomes, how do we get these down to measurable or accomplishable goals or objectives in this case? Um, the next step in order to accomplish that was the adoption of six strategic priorities. So the six strategic priorities can really be thought of as policy areas um of focus, or we could um align the desired goals again with that vision we just spoke of. So the six that we selected for this fiscal year were environmental leadership, fiscal resiliency, public safety and emergency preparedness, recreation, youth and senior services, organizational excellence and development and infrastructure. So keeping in in line then with a high level to the very low specific objection objection, excuse me, uh, objectives and goals, the city council adopted twelve objectives to be accomplished by the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Um, these objectives were outlined in a work plan, which is attached to the staff report, which um is composed of staff action items and due dates. So this work plan, if you'll remember, was was really created to properly allocate um city resources and staff time and while also measuring project performance. So I'm going to jump right into the work plan because there are twelve objectives we want to um get into. But before I do that, just wanted to say that this overview from me and 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 Kidding will be high level and brief in nature. Um, but we do have staff from each of the organization, uh, excuse me, each of the departments here to provide clarity. Um, they're they're remote as well, excuse me, here and remote um to provide clarity on on any of these objectives or um uh, answer any questions you may have. So jumping right into objective one, uh, this was acquire real property for the purposes of future parkland or open space designation. Um, over the last fiscal year, staff engaged in preliminary discussions with several property owners. Um, while most discussions were not fruitful, um, staff did bring forward two promising parcels to the Open Space Committee in April. Um, since then, negotiations uh with one property owner have stalled, uh, while staff have conducted preliminary due diligence on a second property will be providing the city council uh for discussion for the direction in the very near future. Moving on to objective two, environmental leadership um was to develop a plan outlining strategies to increase the city's drought preparedness, local water self-reliance and planting of native vegetation. So the Public Works Department really did a great job on this one. Um, as it relates to water use, if you'll remember, in twenty twenty-two, we had emergency drought restrictions and the city met or exceeded all of those, both from the Water District and the state. Um, that being said, effective June twenty twenty-three this month, um, all restrictions have actually been eliminated due to the snowpack and the reservoir um water level that um has reached above uh average um levels. Um, in an effort to continue, right, being water-wise though, the city um has continued to maintain uh reductions at all city parks, medians and parkways as it relates to water use. Getting into landscape transitioning to drought tolerant plants. Um, you'll have noticed now, um, on Mul- on Mulholland Highway and T O Boulevard, there's been a removal of turf, um irrigation modification replacement, as well as the installation of drought tolerant plants. On Lost Hills Road adjacent to Dayanza Park, you'll notice that median has turned into or transitioned to stone and drought tolerant plants. And then finally, finally, you'll notice at the Tennis and Swim Center, um, about fifty percent of that entry has been uh drought tolerant transitioned. And Civic Center has been twenty percent drought tolerant um transitioned. So moving on to um fiscal resiliency, the objective of number three here was to create an economic development plan to attract businesses, fill vacant properties and promote advantages in conducting business in Calabasas. Um, so the city has, to accomplish this goal, the the city has designated the Community Development Director as the primary point of contact to the Chamber of Commerce and Valley Economic Alliance, who provides periodic um coordination and support to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, so speaking of the Chamber of Commerce, staff have started preliminary negotiations for a new agreement. Um, where in which the city will include in their ask, amongst other things, an annual business satisfaction survey, as well as a dedicated webpage on how to start a business in Calabasas. So staff anticipates this agreement to be finalized by September twenty twenty-three. Moving on to objective number four, to conduct a feasibility study regarding the stationing of cell towers on publicly owned sites to expand coverage areas. Um, the, there was a request for proposals that was completed in December twenty twenty-two. Um, which in which the city received nine potential, excuse me, the city requested for nine potential city-owned sites that could accommodate a wireless facility. Um, city staff reviewed proposals and presented this to the Wireless Committee on June twenty-sixth this week. And um after receiving direction from the committee, staff And after receiving direction from the committee, staff will be presenting to the Communications and Technology Commission, followed by the city council for final approval. Moving on to objective number five, to develop a city readiness and education initiative for earthquake and fire emergencies, support home hardening programs, fire safe councils and emergency equipment procurement. So as it relates to emergency communication, the city has coordinated with L A County Office of Emergency Management to successfully launch Zone Haven for all cog cities in October twenty twenty two. Following this launch, the city continues to promote the Know Your Zone campaign and create new city policies that align with with this Zone Haven Emergency Response System. In addition to that, city staff continues regular meetings with Epic to coordinate on emergency preparedness matters related to emergency communication and home hardening. As it relates to infrastructure investments, the city's AM repeater has modified to allow internet and remote access as well as solar battery power backup. The Mobile Emergency Operations Center has been ordered, but unfortunately is back ordered until September twenty twenty three. And then finally, on May thirty first, the city council adopted a Woolsey Fire Spending Plan, which included the purchase of fifty battery backup devices for medical baseline and critical care residents. Objective number six, this is to review the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department contract and consider opportunities to realign funding and services, address open space break ins, HOA neighborhood watch coordination and the remediation of street racing. So as it relates to the Sheriff's Department service levels, we won't get into that because that item was just discussed. But again, as the background was provided, staff has advocated for a detailed overview of the contract expenses and services and is in the process of renegotiating, excuse me, reevaluating the contract should council so choose to do so. Getting into the public safety investments. So staff are coordinating with the Lost Hills Captain to discuss the Real Time Crime and Disaster Center and its Pilot Virtual Patrol Deputy Program that would leverage private sector technology to address current public safety concerns. Staff will also be utilizing the services of a public safety consulting firm to review the city's current public safety landscape and to collaborate on innovative solutions. And then finally, you'll remember from last meeting on the twenty first, safety speed message signs and one additional combination message were recently approved for purchase. Moving on to objective number seven, under the Recreation Youth and Senior Services Priority, this would be the reopening of the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center. So roof repair work has started effective May twenty twenty three, with general repair and maintenance work also ongoing. Unfortunately, due to funding delays related to federal wage compliance requirements, staff anticipates a facility reopening date at the beginning of two thousand twenty four. In the interim, we have, the city has hired three recreation coordinators for programming and staffing coordination in the meantime. Moving on to objective eight, to conduct a feasibility study of adding basketball courts, soccer fields or skate parks to improve recreation programs and opportunities for teenagers. A contract with Pros Consulting was executed in April twenty twenty three and an expected completion date is August two thousand twenty three. So once the once the study is complete, staff will present this to the Parks Recreation Education Commission and the city council before the end of the two thousand twenty three calendar year. Moving on to objective number nine, upgrade playground equipment, trails and pathways at city parks. So Gates Canyon Park replacement is ongoing. Staff is working with Little Tykes to finalize the design phase, expects Brandon's Village demolition to occur by late fall two thousand twenty three. There is also an RP OSD grant for the refurbishment of the Deans Park Court, which will be submitted to the city council in August two thousand twenty three. Finally, the preliminary design of Freedom Park will be presented at the Parks Education and Recreation Commission in October two thousand, two thousand twenty three. Objective ten, to complete a full and permanent build out of Wild Walnut Park to include a dog and children's park. So in August two thousand twenty two, you'll remember the city council approved moving approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in CIP funding from fiscal years twenty three and twenty four into two thousand twenty two for an eight hundred thousand dollar Wild Walnut Park improvement. Infrastructure improvements made to date include the parking lot, retaining walls, sidewalk and storm drains. Staff are preparing the project bid packet and will issue in July two thousand twenty three with staff expectations expecting, excuse me, construction to start in fall two thousand twenty three. Objective eleven, the complete annexation of Craftsman's Corner, develop a plan to annex other properties within the city's sphere of influence. So staff has met with the CEO's office, the county CEO's office, to develop draft terms for the property transfer, including a review of the tax sharing agreement. Staff have completed this review, provided comments back to the CEO's office, and is waiting for additional comments from Hidden Hills and the county. Final objective number twelve, to provide options that allow for the relief of traffic congestion within the city. So in April, excuse me, the city completed its local roadway safety plan in August two thousand twenty two and applied for a highway safety improvement program funding in September two thousand twenty two. In April, the city was awarded one hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars in grants to fund intersection improvements. And staff will be presenting the budget amendment, contract award and projects overview for the end of calendar year two thousand twenty three. So that that completes again the high level overview of the twelve objectives in the work plan. I will hand it now on to the city manager to to talk a bit more.
Thank you, Michael. I want to, first of all, express appreciation to staff over this last year and the work that was done on these different objectives in the work plan. This was a big undertaking and staff has done well to really push themselves to accomplish a lot of these objectives that were initially outlined. I do want to make a few observations about the strategic priorities and the overall work plan. First of all, I want to focus on some of the positive. As Michael mentioned, this was our first initiative, our first effort of working on a strategic priorities and then an associated work plan. This is a big undertaking and it was new to us. And because it was new, we've learned a lot in the process. We've we fumbled a bit and it was a little bit clunky at the beginning. But we've also gone through this and understood it much better than we had it previously for having not doing it. The other thing I think that is important is, and then, Michael, if you could go back to page four, just on on the slide slide. The the six priority areas or strategic priority areas that were identified by the council. I think these are very solid and still very relevant. At the council, in, you know, in conjunction with the community, with our different commissions, various stakeholders, came to the conclusion or reached the consensus on these six. And in most of what we still do, I find that these are very relevant and we'll see these creating a good foundation going forward. And now the council at their discretion could change some of these. We might look at and say, hey, we might want to switch this one out for a different strategic priority as we go through the next process. But I think for the most part, we've captured again what's most important to the council and the community and our different stakeholders. The the work plan that was created identified different objectives and different task initiatives that were most important to the council. This helped really solidify staff's efforts beyond the normal day to day activity of things that the council wanted staff to work on. So again, it helped to provide some focus on that. A few of the areas for improvement, one of the things that Michael and I have talked about repeatedly during this process is we made the decision last year to base the the work plan on a fiscal year. The idea with that was that it would tie to the budget and then we'd be able to allocate resources accordingly and then move forward with the different work plan objectives. There's good to that. The downside of that is so much of what we do is also based on a calendar year. We switch mayors. Most cities around us are setting goals at the beginning of the year. And so we found that and it would be our recommendation to to switch to a calendar year and thereby use the this time, for example, time leading up to the the January first to work with the council to set those new objectives, goals, work plan initiatives that we'd like to accomplish. One of the downsides, again, of the fiscal year that we found is in the case of having a new council member come on board, that new council member doesn't have an opportunity to participate in that process. They've they've entered a strategic work plan that is already six months into it. And again, so one of the things that as we've looked at other cities and and going forward, we see that the benefits of a calendar year on that. Also, the one of the things that we've identified as staff or felt as staff is that the objectives became overly complicated. I think we remember going through that process as we were trying to finalize things. We started compounding or adding to objectives and it became instead of a single objective, it became five objectives in one. And so really, instead of having twelve objectives, we ended up with thirty seven or whatever the number is. And there's what the problem is with that is it starts to really dilute what's most important to the council. And and so we'd like to look at that. One of the things that I think we could have done better with the work plan is better use of our commissions. Again, starting out in that calendar year, understanding what's most important to the council and then directing some of that work to our commissions, giving them almost tasks or assignments to help staff and the council move forward with some of those, the work plan initiatives. Additionally, staff has felt for some time that unfortunately, the work plan competed or at times took a backseat to future agenda items, commission, or I'm sorry, committee requests or other initiatives that came from the community. Now, at times this might happen. In fact, the Protocols Commission is looking at this and addressing out and will present an idea of how this might be resolved. It's not going to be perfect, but what we see right now is there is there really is no priority. Everything is a priority. And so when everything is a priority, is it really a priority, I guess, is the question. And so I think we can figure out how to bring that again, a little bit more to the forefront of what items are addressed and in the time and the manner, really to dedicate the appropriate staff time to be able to do that. A couple of recommendations, again, I mentioned that and we're hoping to hear from your thoughts on this as well as shift to a calendar year. Michael and I have felt through the process, we'd like to move forward with the use of a consultant, an outside consultant that can help navigate this process a little bit better. I think that will bring an outside perspective of somebody who's skilled in doing strategic plans, somebody who can interface between council, the community and staff. We'd like to start now over this next six months to develop a work plan that is adopted in January. And we'd like to explore ways to bring the strategic priorities to the forefront. So, for example, Michael has done some research and other cities that do well with their their goals or their work plans. They list that on the agenda of, and so every agenda item, every staff report will have the way it ties into the strategic priorities or the work plan. So it's very clear. And if it doesn't, it's so noted in that staff report where it might be this came from a commission or this was recommended by a council committee. But it's very clear on that staff report, does this tie into the strategic priorities and the work plan? Again, there's a number of different thoughts that we'd have. Michael and I would like to explore this further and either this could be done, council, through one of our existing committees. If we wanted to designate a committee, it could be done something maybe where the council tasked the mayor and the mayor pro tem to work with staff to explore some ways to refine this and then bring this forward to to council. Again, I think we could improve this and go forward for this next six months and starting in in twenty twenty four with a really fresh and vibrant strategic priority design work plan process.
Thank you very much, and I'll just quickly say that I am fully in support of starting this early January, at least having come to council early January, so the strategic priorities can be looked at by the council for that year. And at this point, it's good that we're doing it, but it's half, we're halfway through, so we're not going to make too many changes, I don't think, today, tonight. Go ahead to my colleagues with questions, comments, Council, Bever Albert.
Yeah, I'd be glad to kick it off. I recall when this was developing about a year and a half ago, before I was on council, and I was so excited because I wanted to see it concluded. I wanted to see how it would form and I watched it form. And this particular page that you have up, the six strategic priorities, it's really the heart and soul of everything. I mean, there's other issues, but you know, when you get this right, you're doing great. And I'm so glad that we have a focus to work from. We actually have a plan. They call it a work plan. I call, I think of it as a focus plan that will never go away and is vital. This is the the pulse of what a city is all about. And previously, over the years that I've paid attention to council, we've had years where there've been issues that were very relevant and important to be cared about. Then we moved to the next issue and the next issue, but there wasn't an overall plan focus that we had on a twelve month basis and a continual focus on these particular items. So the whole thing is just great and I applaud staff and city manager for putting all of this together. A lot of hard work went into it, not just to put it together, but to implement it. And the idea was to complete it by the end of the year. And we're in process. I don't have to go through each one where we are in the progress report, but you're doing great and I would grade very high on that. I'm not a big fan of going out and using consultants all the time. I'd like to see our department heads take more of a structural lead on that. So I feel pretty strongly about that. I think we could do a lot of these things as a city and manage it ourselves. I like the calendar versus fiscal. That's super because you've got a mayor that wants to have a year to look at what he's accomplished and helped. And it's disrupted by having it as a fiscal as far as the strategic priorities are concerned. It's such a comprehensive plan. It's so good. I do have a question about the local roadway improvement plan, though, just to get off the general subject for a minute. Could you explain that a little bit to me? We had one hundred and sixty some odd thousand dollars. What is that actually going to? Is that for signage? How is that going to be spent?
We were successful in applying for a grant using that local road safety plans and consultant, we use a consultant to evaluate number of street segments and intersection and come up with the improvements. And then later, after that staff reviewed that report and we selected the locations that were higher priority and the improvements that are going to be made, there are eight intersections. Lost Hills and Agora Road, Lost Hills and Las Virginas, Las Virginas and Agora. Las Virginas Muro Road, Parkway Calabasas Calabasas Road, Parkway Calabasas Park Granada, Calabasas Road and Park Granada, where improvements will be made to install additional signage, to install additional signal hats, to install back plates for the signals, to improve striping for, you know, to increase the safety in the intersection and traffic flow.
It's a lot to do with that money, though. I don't know how far that's going to go. But
We will use the design and house and we'll have, you know, that cost estimate that we prepared, but again, I don't know how prices are going to go, but that striping and traffic signal that that money will will go.
Going to be considered with the Traffic Transportation Commission?
Yes.
Work with them? Great. Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraut. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation tonight. And I did have one question before I quit for some comments. In our staff report, in in our council packet, I should say, the status of each item was color coded. in our council packet, I should say, the status of each item was color coded, green for complete or yellow for in progress. And there was only one red item. It was under Craftsman's Corner. And it was engage in LAFCO public hearings. And it's marked as delayed. Is is there something special about that? That's is it just behind schedule or?
Yeah. So the simplest way for to describe delayed would be perhaps greater than the calendar year. On on objective number one, you'll also notice the last item there for transferring the property over to the city. That's also delayed. So it's really not not close to the foreseeable future.
It didn't get completed in the fiscal year.
Correct. So so it's not complete. It's not in progress and it's really not close to being.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. As far as the plan and setting our strategic priorities, I too would be in favor of a calendar year for a couple of reasons. One is mentioned is that we do occasionally, you know, have a new council at the beginning of the year, and we want to make sure that our goal and priorities for that year align with the new council. The second reason is is that as we lead up to the fiscal year, budget takes a lot of time. We have several meetings with budget presentations and to try to do strategic priorities at the same time would be very difficult. I think when we started this process, we started in a January and it took us till April to get it together, which is why we launched it for the fiscal year. But getting back to the January sounds like a good idea. And I would agree with Councilmember Albrecht that having been through it already, I think we've learned some lessons and I don't really think we need to bring in an outside consultant to manage it. I think that's something that we could do in-house and if we, you know, need to go watch some other cities process to less learn a few more lessons, you know, they've got videos out there for those. So I would encourage us to try to keep this in-house, but apply the lessons that we learned last time. And one of the lessons, as was mentioned here tonight, was when when certain items weren't getting enough votes, they were combined into one or two or three items into a single lump that way they could get the votes and you need to create a process that would prevent that from happening. Which means we're going to do less. And I think that was what the problem was. We were trying to get it down to an arbitrary number of 12 or something. And in order to get there, there was many things that that several of us didn't want to give up. There were three things that I did give up that I didn't get the support for, and I'm just going to echo them because because I can, because I have a microphone in front of me. They were better use of our commissions. I could not get support for that. Hire a grant writer. I could not get support for that. But I think at our last meeting, we went for a lobbyist who would write grants or find grants. I digress. And the other one was building relationships with our neighbors. And I think you know, we constantly hear, has this gone to our commission? What are our commissioners doing? And and I think we've we've had several instances this year where communications between us and our neighbors, whether it's adjacent cities or school districts or other organizations have fallen apart and we need to keep up those lines of communication and build those relationships. So as we get into this process coming up, those are going to be the three things I'll be pushing for. Aside from anything else that might come across the table, just in case you're wondering which which way my votes are going to go. And other than that, I would just have to say fantastic job in getting these things done. Our work plan, our striped strategic priorities are our compass. They give us direction. The goals that we set might be lofty. I'd rather set lofty goals and achieve 70% of them than set simple goals and and be able to hit all of them. So great job and thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Weintraub.
Thank you so much for bringing this back. To start, I'm also in support of a calendar year. And I would also look to staff for realistic expectations. If they don't think something could get done in one year, tell us so that when you bring it back, it doesn't have to be a red or a yellow, like from the get go. Like it could be a priority, but it might be a two, it might take two years to get done, you know, or would be something ongoing. I mean, relationships with our neighbors. To me, it doesn't even have to be a priority. It's just something that should be done. So it would be an ongoing thing. But to the document in front of us, the only one that I'm frustrated or disappointed in is regarding our parks. I just I can't get a clear picture on when things are going to be open and operating. And I see things on here that like something so simple, like one playground that was removed in a park because it was supposedly not safe. Now it's going to a commission for redesign. I mean, people are waiting for a recreation. That's the bottom line. It's like it just keeps going on and on. And like I'm looking here about the pros consulting, which is great. But it says it's expected completion date of August, but then it says it's going to go before the pre. Staff will present results to the pre and the city council before the end of the calendar year. Like that's still multiple months of not hearing anything. And then like what will happen with their results? And then I'm looking on to Gates Canyon Park. It says demolition to occur by late fall, but when will it be done? In the Freedom Park, I've never been told. I know many residents have no idea at all that it's planning to go to the pre. I mean, that really was a simple playground that was supposed to be removed and then put back with a playground that was up to current safety standards. I just feel like we're making so much out of something that doesn't have to be. So worse than Wild Walnut Park, if construction is anticipated to start fall 2003, I'd love to know when we expect it to be open. I just regarding our parks, it's a really sore spot in this community, especially with summer happening right now and kids out of school and no truth, basically like no local parks are operating at their full potential. Or maybe I guess Dianza is or Grape. I mean, it's just, we're not at full capacity and we keep telling people that they're coming this and that. And I'm just not. I would love a document on our parks. So simple, like the name of the park, the status and completion, just like really simple spread like a chart that we can all reference. No, I appreciate all the work that has been done on this. I know we're going to keep growing on this. I just want to make sure that we're putting things in here that can be realistically accomplished. So I know council, we always come up with like lofty ideas and things we're all committed to. But I know collectively, we want to see progress and things done well. So when we go at this again, I just want to make sure that we're maybe more focused and like we all might have to give up some so that we can get the most done, like we all wanted everything in there. And I know we all made compromises, but we probably have to make even more to get things done.
Thank you, Councilmember Buzajin.
Thank you. I did have a question about our website. Do we do we have these strategic priorities up there and listed and any one page other than the staff report?
Yes, we do. There's a dedicated page.
There's a dedicated page. Are we updating that page? Like, you know, I think it would be helpful if there's a major development like on the annexation of Craftsman's Corner, whatever. Let's just say hypothetically that LAFCO approves approves the first round and letters go out to the community. Can we, do we have a mechanism to update the website, put an entry in like update? You know, June 28, 2023, here's what happened. Are we doing that? Or are we just leaving it just a list up there?
We're updating when we provide the updates to council, but we're happy to take that direction and update anytime a staff action item is completed.
Well, I, well, not just complete. I think that if a if there's a significant development in an item, I mean, rather than wait for a council report, which might be months and months away, it'd be nice to have the community be aware because we get asked about these things frequently. Depending on which one it is, and it would be nice to have the page to just say, hey, you can keep up to date on this page and that'll tell you, you know, it's updated weekly with any any notations. I wouldn't expect it to be updated a lot, just major developments, but certainly that would be more helpful than just waiting for a council presentation. That's it. I don't have anything else.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank you for this thorough report. First of all, Michael for presenting and our city manager as well and all all the departments for the work. I in looking at this and again, different than what my mindset was with looking at the titles with the detail and going through the breakdowns, it really a lot of wonderful things were accomplished and and are in the process of being completed hopefully very soon. So that was really good to hear. I, as already stated, absolutely, this should be on a calendar year should be, even if it's a special meeting, should be one of the earliest meetings we have in January. So we can start right off the bat on the right with with a clear direction of what we're doing and what council wants to do, whoever the council is at that time. I'll start with just a few comments. And and the the I'm sounding like Peter now, and I agree with some of your comments, but I'm not voting and we're not discussing it at this point. The environmental leadership, what we said we were going to do, we are accomplishing. I'd certainly like to see us, our sustainability task force is a desirous of doing a little more next time, I think, hopefully next year. So that's one thing. And I don't want to focus on on anything but positives, but I do have to say that the main items, and that's just the nature of of maybe what what was handed off to the department head this year at the beginning of the year, but is is the blue areas. It blues my favorite color, but not in this instance. The and the recreation portion, I will not repeat all those statements. Mayor Pro Tem Weintraub indicated, but I do agree with a lot of them. I mean, we had a big reopening of the community center. I know there are things, things occur, things happen and many things have occurred. But this council, if I am pretty consistent with my memory, agreed to and we we followed through and voted to use ARPA funds for a number of these parks to have some completion. So our community would have some of the parks that are here active and able to be used fully by by the by this year. I was going to say by summer, but maybe that's being too advantageous. Brandon's Village came to us a number of times. We, I thought voted on a plan, we picked, we picked everything. There was a split council on a certain part of the plan, but I thought I'd until recently, I thought that was going forward and being being working towards opening. We'll put it that way. I won't repeat some of the other parks that have been mentioned. I will say I also thought we voted long ago. I remember early, I believe it was early this year, we had lots of groups, maybe it was actually last year because it was before Ed was on council. And we had lots of groups here talking about the roller hockey, the basketball and and the pickleball, the three groups. And we had an agreement and we had a design. And I don't know what's going on with that. I'm thinking, I'm hoping it's positive that maybe isn't on this list. But that's an example. We have as a council given our vote, our we've we've given our cities money to support moving forward on these projects and you can't do everything all at once. I know that. But so my recommendation would be in this instance, that we pick one or two and get them accomplished, get them done. And then the others like has been mentioned, maybe they are two year projects, maybe they're three year projects. Wild Walnut has been a long, long project, so I'm very anxious that that be completed. So are the all our four legged and two legged friends out there. The the two at least watching, I'm sure agree on the Zoom, but there are many, many people in the city who write to us all the time. So I am, I will say disappointed that we have not done better in that area of and I've said it before, so I'm not saying something I haven't said, but I'm disappointed that area is blue. And as I said, I think we can do better and we should do better in that area. Other than that, I will say this is really impressive and really a very good job and including that because some of the items listed on here, even though they're blue, there's a lot of good work that's been done and a lot of planning. So I know that. Those are all the comments I have. I will turn to my colleagues for additional comments, questions. Or if anyone is online, wish to speak on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And I'd see no one with hands raised or carts coming forward in the audience. I didn't know if Mr. City Manager or staff wishes to make any comments or or just receive and file this item, which it is.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I think the the comments have been constructive and noted, so we appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a hand up. Sorry. Apologies.
Well, I didn't close public comment, but we were almost done. I'm gonna guess, I won't guess.
Go ahead.
It's Mr. Joe.
Correct.
Welcome.
David, you've become like Ed McMahon.
You are correct, sir.
Thank you. First of all, all great comments, great report. I'm a little concerned whenever I hear people immediately throw out the idea of a consultant. I really have no idea what's taking up this staff's time. But here's the city manager saying, yeah, it's a bit of a problem. So I think it's worth looking at exactly what's interfering with what. And the benefit of having a consultant is it actually saves you time and money. If you hire the right consultant and the type of person that has the expertise to actually get to the nut of the problem immediately. So there's a lot of benefit there. So I wouldn't throw that idea out completely. I might suggest to the city manager that hey, who you got in mind and why is this person such a great choice? And some of the other questions about interfering with the staff's time. I hear comments all the time, oh, you know, we're losing people through retirement or whatever. So there have been some changes at the staff levels that and particularly the high level that are considerations, I think, when you're taking a look at how much you're going to expect of the staff and how much they can accomplish. Maybe maybe this consultant is going to help them get over a hump and things are going to run a lot smoother from now on in. I don't know the answers to those questions, but I think you need to consider those things as well. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next time I'll pull out an envelope, right? Before I call in. Any other members of the public wish to speak, Madam Clerk, on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no other comments present, did you have a comment to make? No, okay. I was looking at you. You're reaching for something. I will say I think you have a direction from council as to receive and file, so we will do so. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll move on to informational reports, the check register for the period May 13 to June 16, 2023. Are there any questions regarding the check register? Seeing none, we'll move on to task force reports. We'll turn to Mayor Pro Tem Weintraub.
Mayor Shapiro and I had a wireless task force meeting where we looked at the RFP for cell towers on publicly owned sites to expand coverage areas. So that was great progress and that will be coming to council. Councilmember Albrecht and I had our Economic Development Subcommittee meeting and we met with the chamber to discuss ways to support businesses in Calabasas, looking at ways so that the city can know what businesses are in Calabasas and which businesses are leaving Calabasas. So we're exploring different options on that. We had our let's see, yeah, we had a cog meeting. We had our last cog meeting and for people that are interested in the community, there is an update each month on the business that was done at the cog. So some people have reached out to me and I'm very open to sharing those reports as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Buzajin.
There will be a meeting of the Aguirre Hills Calabasas Community Center Joint Powers Authority here at Calabasas City Hall tomorrow, 6:30 PM. On August 3, the annual installation banquet of the League of California Cities is coming up. A few of us will be attending in Long Beach. I will be going to the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority annual meeting as our delegate on September 19. And finally, the Procedures and Protocols Committee has met several times and we are going to, we are done with the protocols draft. We'll bring it to the council sometime in August.
Thank you very much and thanks for the work on that and your colleague on that, Councilmember Kraut. Yes, the Protocols Committee has been meeting and thank you for that. In addition,
In addition, uh, the League of California Cities, uh, Transportation, Communication and Public Works Committee met, uh, on Friday. And we discussed a lot of material. Much of it had to do with securing grants through, uh, Caltrans and such, such. And as I listened to other cities and their struggles, I quietly smiled knowing that our public works department are just rock stars in that area. Uh, so congratulations to our city. I learned a couple of new things that I'll be sharing with our group here, including an upcoming grants 101 webinar that's coming up. Uh, and other information on local programs. Uh, they presented the My Shake app as well. You might try downloading that. Uh, that'll give you a little early warning for an earthquake. It's not going to give you advanced warning of the earthquake per se, but it detects what's called the P wave that comes out of an earthquake at the onset. And if you're far enough away from the epicenter, you could get 10, 20, or even 60 seconds notice before the earthquake gets to you. So check it out. It's called, uh, My Shake and you can download that at your, uh, your app store. Um, lots of other things were discussed, including all the bills. There was two dozen fentanyl bills and things like that. And just one of interest and, and note is AB 825 would allow you to ride a bicycle on a public sidewalk as long as there was not a parallel and adjacent bike path on the street. And so they were discussing, uh, things that cities can do, like designating certain sidewalks as promenades, which would allow you to, uh, police bicycling on the sidewalk in certain areas where it just wouldn't be appropriate. So things like that, that we learn to watch for, I won't get into any more details, but a lot of great information from that meeting that I'll be sharing with our city manager. And then finally, the, uh, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy met on Monday evening as well. Um, a lot of information for projects outside of our area, but interesting to note, wildlife connectivity plans for a certain area have been prepared by the conservancy. Uh, the area they started with is Burbank and Glendale. Uh, it's something we should consider looking at strongly as we develop our future general, general plans because our wildlife connectivity plan shows connectivity within Calabasas, but doesn't really show how it connects to the wildlife around us. So continuity between cities and stuff like that. Really important and, uh, great, great work by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. It was a busy week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I got excited when you said shake, but the wrong one. Uh, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. Um, concerning the economic development with, uh, Protem, uh, Weintraub, uh, we also talked about something I hope we're going to have, uh, with the chamber because the chamber and the city are getting very, very close. They're really, uh, so supportive of what we're doing. We're considering doing a sickle villa. Hope I'm saying it right and shutting down Calabasas Road. So I'll let the head out of the box a little bit, but, um, hopefully that'll take place. Um, I've got one, uh, task force that I'm involved with the day after the 4th of July, and that's the, uh, Queen Power Alliance and, uh, it's, uh, was a little overwhelming at first when I went on that task force. It, it's a pretty dynamic. It's, it's such a large institution now in the state. Uh, they have some bonds maturing and I sit on that task force with Mayor Shapiro as an alternate. Uh, and I am excited about it. It's really great. And I'll have a real detailed report, uh, at our next council meeting in August on the outcomes. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, just quickly, I wanted to, since, since we have a member of the chamber former chair here, uh, we had a great chamber attorney forum group today with a specialist who flew in from Texas to give a speech on the new, uh, laws pertaining to all types of ethics known, some of them known as the Gerardi laws, as he called them here. And thank you for that. The meeting next month will take place as well. So look for that notice. And also the chamber is kind enough to have a lunch for the mayor, uh, and requiring me to speak, which will be kept short, I promise. Uh, August 17th, since we're not going to meet till August, I'll mention it. I met with the League of California Cities Policy Committee, my committee met, I didn't see, when promoted or did you get out?
It was Thursday, it was Friday.
Oh, fun, fun, fun. It was on affordable housing. Ours was all on affordable houses, housing and unhoused individuals housing. Uh, a lot of information, a lot of great ideas through the state were provided. I'll share that with all. Yeah. Once I have the summary rather than me talking about it now. I attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting, uh, also, which turned in, there's a number of things discussed about small businesses supporting in the valley and housing. They're moving forward with some projects and there are a couple of events coming up as well. Um, I'll be attending a two-day SCAG Leadership EAC Retreat coming up, and I also had the pleasure to join Councilmember Albrecht and speak at a Rotary luncheon last week, which was very nice. Our Rotary, I made sure to tell them how important they are to our city and how much we appreciate their work with neighbors in need and everything they do. And they are, uh, appreciative of our city tremendously as well. And that's all I have. So I'll look to city manager, uh, me, do you have anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, just a, a couple of items. Yesterday, we, we received news that this is really exciting that, uh, the budget request, the state budget request for $5 million for open space acquisition, uh, has passed both through the, uh, um, assembly and budget committees. So it's on the governor's desk. Um, now cross your fingers. We don't know what that means. Uh, we, we know that the budget's tight in Sacramento this year. But that is a very big hurdle that we've made it this far in the budgetary process in such a short amount of time. And thank you to each of you who have reached out to legislators and, uh, our representatives at the state level. Um, we're hoping that, uh, that continues to move forward in the budget process and the governor leaves that alone. Um, uh, uh, speaking of the, the sickle villa, the mini villa, um, Phil Laskin, our, our interim director identified an open streets grant. And he will be working with Erica to see if this is a, an option for us to apply for funds that could be used for this type of an event. So we're excited about that and we'll have more as we research this grant, uh, and see if it applies to our community and, and see if we can use that funding for, for this type of event. And then finally, I wanted to, um, uh, compliment our emergency management staff, Mike Dyer and Debbie Larson, uh, for helping organize a training over the last couple of days. Uh, we involved, uh, a, a, a big group of our staff, over 30 staff at different times in a two-day training. And then this morning, starting at eight o'clock, we simulated a, a fire. And with that, we had, uh, support and assistance from Kevin McGowan with the, uh, who's the director of Emergency Management Management with LA County, Bennett Cummings from the same office, uh, Chief, um, Chief Smith was here in the room with us. Um, several other outside partners who volunteered to assist. It was a, a full hands-on and we, we went through that exercise over a period of four hours to put into practice the emergency operations plan that the council adopted just a few weeks ago. And really test our skills and, and, uh, our ability to communicate and, and, um, uh, react and respond in the event of an emergency. Uh, as is expected, we have a lot to improve on, but as you know, several of our facilitators, uh, we had an outside, uh, uh, group who facilitated this. This is a much safer place to, to fail in, in these, these training exercises than when the fire really hits. And so we are going to continue to practice and, and train, and we'll have more updates for you in the future on that.
Sure. Mayor Protem Weintraub.
What was one area that we needed improvement on?
Mayor Protem, I have seven pages.
Okay. You can tell us later.
Um, no, a, a couple of the things. So let me share some highlights. One of the things that we noticed is uh, each of our, it, it, our, the group is broken down into sections. And so you have a planning sections and operations sections, logistics, so forth. Um, each of the sections communicated really well with each other and that was important. Um, but one of the things that was, I think, really telling is that because we recently adopted this emergency operation plan, the forms were new to us.
Okay.
And so we, we need some training on those forms. Uh, at the same time, Kevin McGowan with the county, he was very insightful at the end of the training is we don't want to let the forms get into the way of what we're really trying to accomplish. We don't want perfect forms as if we're trying to do, get a grade in school. It's more important that we know how to address the emergency. The forms will become a byproduct of that, but that was, that was a hangup as, in working with those forms. Um, and, uh, additionally, we worked with Epic. Epic was in the room and communicating via amateur radio. So a lot of learning opportunities, but a lot of good that came from it.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And, uh, are there any requests for future agenda items and information items? Uh, Mayor Protem Weintraub.
At some point, it could be like lower on the list, but I'd like an update on film, the number of film permits issued in the city. And how people apply for permits and the fees associated with that, just the whole process to get a film permit. Cause I'm seeing more and more filming taking place in Calabasas. I just wanted to get the big picture of that. Thank you.
And is there a second on that request? Just, uh, on film permitting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I heard two, a second. I gotta think. Okay. Any other?
I had, I had one, uh, that I'd like. Item number eight that we continued, as long as it's being continued and we know the Public Safety Commission's meeting next month. I'd like, I'd like them to take a look at this too. I mean, they look for things to do and this is perfect for them.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. I had that same thought today as we, or yesterday, when we discussed uh, moving that to a later date that we'd involve the Public Safety Commission on that.
Right. Good. Anything else? Nope. Seeing none. I will just wish good, positive thoughts to the governor to sign our fund request. And, uh, we will now, and wish everybody a happy, healthy, safe 4th of July, and we'll see you there. We'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is August 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We are adjourned.